When you volunteer.
Joe on a limb and he's freaking.
Oh, wow. That'll teach me. I think I would have learned from the military to volunteer.
That's right.
All right. Good evening and welcome to twenty-two member of meeting of the Stowe Select Board, which is also our last meeting of two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting will be recorded and will be on Stowe TV. First off, we've got public comment and I'm looking for any comment from the public for something that is not on the agenda already tonight. If anyone has anything that they would like to say. Any hands raised on the Zoom?
Hearing none.
No? All right, hearing none. We are going to push board member comments in the town administrators' report to after our meeting with the planning board. So first off, we're gonna start with appointments. And so our first appointment this evening is for Brian Hatch to the position of the Acting Highway Superintendent. And so Denise put a memo in and I would take your recommendation.
Thank you. So as you all know, Stephen A. Doe, our highway superintendent, is retiring in January. However, he is preceding that with vacation time beginning this Friday. Most of his vacation time will be traveling out of the country. He will not be accessible. It is important for continuity of service and management to have a someone in the department head role. So Brian Hatch has been our assistant superintendent, been with us for many years and is I'm recommending him be appointed as the acting superintendent until the until the actual retirement of Stephen A. Doe occurs in January.
Fantastic. And I see Brian, are you on this evening? Hello? Welcome.
He's gotta unmute.
Sure.
Okay.
Hello. Nope, he muted.
He remuted himself. He did it, but he remuted. Try it again, Brian. There we go.
How's that?
Hi, Brian. How are you?
There we go.
Excellent.
Hey, how are you? How was everybody this evening?
We are delightful this evening. Did you wanna say anything before we take a vote to approve?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity. It was an opportunity that I have done once before when when Mike Clayton retired. So I think I won't have a problem sliding into the role and and doing what needs to be done for the town.
Fantastic. Especially as we're heading into this snowy season in his.
Don't use that.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Hatch?
I'm just, how long have you been with the Highway Department, Brian?
Yeah, twenty-six is the end of this month.
Excellent.
That's great.
One car.
Wow, thank you. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Good to have you. And I actually have a question for Denise.
Sure.
So this is only until the official retirement date and then will we have another acting until we hire someone?
So right now, my plan is to come back to you in January and ask to make Brian the interim superintendent. While we really reevaluate and determine if we're going to move forward with the full DPW. I'd like to meet with members of the Highway Department. There has been some what I'll call turmoil over the last several years. So I'd like to talk to the staff, really get a feel for what's needed in this role and have Brian serve as interim until we're ready to advertise the next full position.
Fantastic. Excellent. All right, with that, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Brian Hatch as Acting Highway Superintendent effective December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and until a permanent highway superintendent has been hired.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Have a good evening.
Thank you and thank you for all your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You as well.
You too.
All right, we've got a couple of reappointments for our Stowe Cultural Council. We have Debbie Maher and Charles Struff. Are either of them on?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, do you wanna say anything about the reappointments?
So I'll be honest, I didn't really weigh in on these reappointments. The Cultural Council, they're they fall under sort of state guidelines and how many terms they can serve. So these are reappointments. We did make them through June thirtieth. Cultural Council here has been funny that they've all ended whenever they were reappointed through, and we're trying to get them more consistent because quite candidly, we missed them and their terms actually expired in October.
I see. Okay.
So we'd like to get them on the same pattern as the rest of them, but I know they both bring a lot to the Cultural Council and I would love to see them continue for another term.
Great. All right, well, if they are not here, I will take any questions. Anybody?
None.
No? No questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
Should I do one each individually?
Yeah, well, however it's written. Yeah, each individually.
I move to reappoint Debbie Maher to the Stowe Cultural Council for the remainder of a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Next.
I move to reappoint Charles Struff to the Stowe Cultural Council for the remainder of a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Excellent. All right, next appointment. We have Mark Dexter for the Recreation Commission. And Denise.
Yep, so I am recommending Mark to the Recreation Commission. As I said in my memo, he moved to town in two thousand and twenty-one, has two young children that benefit from the recreation programs. And I really enjoyed that he wants to get involved in the sort of the financial management of recreation, look at the cost benefit some of the programs and see how the funding for Camp Stowe can benefit other recreational programs and opportunities that we offer here.
Great.
And I think that would be a great perspective on the board.
Fantastic. Hi, Mark.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm doing well.
Great. Is there anything you would like to say about why you'd like to serve on the Recreation Commission?
Um, I could, like Denise mentioned, um, we heard about Camp Stowe before we, I came from Marlboro, so we heard about Camp Stowe before. So when we moved here, we got the kids in right away. The word of mouth was so good about Camp Stowe. And then it's a opportunity to get back to this town. I grew up in Maine. This feels like a small town in Maine, should believe within forty-five. And so this is just a chance that I can actually help out and I appreciate the opportunity and stuff. I also used to coach soccer, so I'm familiar with the actual sports aspects and things of that, the field and the maintenance. But yeah, so it looks like a good fit for me.
Excellent. Thank you. And board member questions for Mark?
I have one, not for Mark, but a question for Denise.
Sure.
Sure.
So you, did you interview both candidates?
I did not speak with Mary Ann. I have worked with her before, so.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other questions, Karen?
All right, with that, I will take a motion.
I move to appoint Mark Dexter to the Recreation Commission to serve the remainder of a one-year term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Excellent. Thank you so much, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
And they'll be in touch with him?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we are going to go now into our litigation update with our attorney, William Hewig. Did I say it right?
That's right.
Hewig, perfect. All right, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the board, men of administrator, members of the public. I gave you a report, which you have, and it includes more than litigation because I thought that if you take a look at what we do, the scope of our work during the year, we have four litigation cases, but there's a lot more going on as far as legal services that we provide to the town. So I wanted to give you an update on those. And then there's a section here of the of cases and matters that have closed over the past year or two, so I just wanted to let you know about those because two of them have reopened. But I don't think there's gonna be much legal work involved. The first case on the pending litigation report is the Parrishow case. This was in a Butters suit against the Board of Health in Millsix County Superior Court. The Board of Health granted a disposal system construction permit for septic systems of two units of affordable housing with Habitat for, in the Habitat for Humanity project at the intersection of Pine Road and, Pine Point, Pine Point Road and Sudbury Road. The Butters claimed fear of contamination in their water resulting from the septic system permit that was granted. Board of Health did its job meticulously. We thought they did everything right. They followed directions. We thought that their process was perfect and the court below agreed with that. There was a summary judgment motion in September, two thousand and twenty-one. Court granted it and then the Butters appealed that decision, so it's up at the appeals court now on appeal. Appeal briefs are due in February of two thousand and twenty-three on that matter. The second case is the HSH case, Howard Stein Hudson Associates. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. That really is the one big piece of litigation we have. Most of the other litigation involves zoning or Board of Health appeals. In some cases, we take a passive role and let the Butters or the disputing parties fight it out and we simply monitor. But this is an active litigation that we began. And as you know, I'm sure it's a dispute over a contract for design services for about a half a mile on Route one seventeen. And it goes back a number of years. The the original contract dates from March ten, two thousand and fourteen with HSH. And they proposed a mill and overlay design for the project that turned out to be not proper or appropriate. They redesigned, they revised the plan into a an alternative plan and that plan also had a number of problems. There was insufficient data. They did not comply with Department of Transportation requirements. They didn't meet professional standards and some other professional requirements as well. In September, two thousand and fourteen, HSH gave the town a hundred percent complete design and in March of two thousand and seventeen, they changed the design plan as a result of objections that were raised to it. Their new project design contained various elements of sloping and elevation that required, that resulted in poor drainage and uneven surfacing. So the town filed a ninety-three A letter, which is a a claim for fraudulent deceptive practices in the in the, in the business, in the, in business and commerce. A lawsuit followed. The town had to redesign the road. The redesigned road came with significant additional costs. The town's lawsuit is ongoing. It's been a large lawsuit, as you know. There have been many depositions of different witnesses. One of the problems you encounter in a case of this complexity is that when you set out on a lawsuit, you never really know whose witnesses on the other side are gonna have the information you want. So discovery tends to be extensive. And a lot of times, for example, we'll take a deposition of somebody represented that they had certain amount of knowledge and you would ask them, do you know this, that, and the other thing? No, I don't. Who's the person with the most knowledge? It's somebody else. So you're leading on a trail of different witnesses and that's, that's what we've done. We've taken a lot of depositions, as you know. Rick Holland of our office is handling this case. He's an expert skilled litigator and a contract lawyer of the first degree. So he is on top of this case. We have essentially, the town has essentially concluded our depositions in this case. And there is a pretrial conference ordered for March of two thousand and twenty-three. For that pretrial conference, both parties will be preparing pretrial briefs. They are extensive. So there's a lot of work that goes into that because that's a summary of all of the witnesses, all the exhibits, all your legal claims. It's essentially setting forth your entire case as if you were going to trial. It's hoped that we can go to mediation and try to get an award for the town that would be satisfied, that would satisfactorily and sufficiently represent our losses. That's the hope. That may be possibly before or after the March pretrial conference. But anyway, that's, in any event, that's the status of the case. At stake is about a million dollars, somewhere in that area of damages. Rick Holland, as I say, is the attorney who has that. You'll be getting reports from him as you have. And he will keep you abreast and so alive of what's going on in that, that case. The third case in the active litigation section is Fisher versus Stowe ZBA. This is a zoning case in Land Court and also in Millsix County Superior Court. This was a case where a Butters appealed a ZBA, a ZBA decision as violative of zoning bylaws for not a decision by the ZBA and they, it was appealed by the Butters as not complying with zoning bylaws, seeking an enforcement of zoning bylaws by the ZBA. Land Court ruled in favor of, there are two Butters. There's Fisher and there's Presty in this case. And those two folks have been fighting for a long time. We are kinda caught in the middle. Land Court ruled favorably in, in favor of Presty in January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Fisher appealed. The appeals court heard the case and remanded it to Land Court vacating the earlier decision in favor of Presty. So now it's back in Land Court again and discovery is going on there. And again, we have a kind of a, well, we have a passive posture in this case. We do not see as being, a town does not see as having an interest in either party, one way or the other. But we are involved because it was our zoning board that made the decision. So that case is pending in Land Court. The fourth case in the active litigation is Black Oak Builders LLC versus Stowe Planning Board. This is an appeal of a planning board grant of an erosion control special permit and site plan approval. There has been very little activity in this case to date and we have had almost no involvement in it whatsoever. So there must be not much going on with this appeal at present. It's pending in Millsix County Superior Court. Following that, in my report to you, I identified some pending but non-litigation matters and I'll just go over those briefly for you as well. Stowe Acres Acquisition. I begin with a number of real estate work, issues, work, cases, matters that have been conducted by Katie Klein of our office, who's a real estate attorney and is the real estate lead attorney for the town of Stowe. The first one is the Stowe Acres Acquisition. This is a, the acquisition of a golf course off, I believe it's Lander Road.
Randall.
Randall Road, okay. We closed in the south part of the course earlier and this is the closing for the north part of the property. The closing is set for January of two thousand and twenty-three. Katie Klein, as I say, has been working on that. Thirty-three Elm Ridge Road Affordable Housing Unit. Here we are negotiating with the Department of Housing and Community Development to try and maintain the affordability component of that property. We're not acquiring it. We're simply working to keep that as an affordable piece of property. And the negotiations are between DHCD and the the mortgage holder of property. It was foreclosed mortgage property. So we've been assisting in that to try and keep that affordable. Third, Great Road Property Donation. This is a donation of a large, I don't know, I guess it's about an acre of land by an organization called Habitat. And it has underground piping and distribution infrastructure for public water supply. And the property, it's proposed to be donated to the town free. It requires legal work because there is a lot of easements and restrictions on the property that have to be overcome before it could be conveyed to the town. So that's the work that's being conducted on that parcel for you. Disillusion of the Housing Authority. Katie worked on that and advised the town on how to undertake the process. I'm not sure where that stands, but our work there is essentially done, I think. Spring Hill Estate and Lake Boone Dam Removal Project are two enforcement actions. And the attorney in our office who's working on those for you is Alex Wisehite. The first one, Spring Hill Estate is an enforcement action by the town planner. The town seeks compliance with the parties in the completion of a stormwater management system for subdivision, under a subdivision plan. The town planner for the subdivision is seeking compliance with the issues rating to the completion of the stormwater management system. The Lake Boone Dam Removal Project, the town is undertaking work on the dam and there appears, it appears that there may be an abutting property owner whose property is on part of the dam property. So negotiations are underway to make sure that before we undertake any work, we're not trespassing on somebody's private property. Room and numeral three, closed, recently closed cases. The Collings Foundation Case versus Stowe Zoning Board of Appeals. That was a dispute over a ZBA cease and desist order prohibiting certain types of categories of conduct by the Collings Foundation related to its property in town. And a settlement was reached under which certain types of specified activities were to be permitted at the airport. And the Collings Institute in May, two thousand and twenty-two notified the ZBA of a dispute and the interpretation of part of the settlement agreement. Specifically, they claim that there should be no limitation on the scope, time, and noise constraints for military demonstrations at the airport. We are attempting to resolve the issue and to encourage the parties to resolve the issue, but in the meantime, we have recommended that the planning board issue a cease and desist order to see if it can be worked out. It's a dispute between the interpretation of the settlement agreement. The Habitat for Humanity Project, those items are all essentially closed. The first one, Ham versus Town of Stowe, was, a Butter Claims versus the Building Inspector. The second one, Habitat for Humanity, North Central v. Stowe Zoning Board of Appeals. The Housing Court claimed the appeal of a ZBA grant of a comprehensive permit. It was resolved and the Habitat for Humanity dropped the case. The third one, let's see, maybe that's third one's over on the next page. Actually, it's number four, but it's the third Plantation One and Two Habitat case. Stowe versus the, I'm sorry. Now we are under the Plantation One and Two section of cases that have closed. Habitat for Humanity was those three. Now we're under Plantation One and Two, Stowe Elderly Housing Corporation, SEHC Appeals. These are all resolved. Number four, the Stowe Elderly Housing Corp versus Zoning Board of Appeals. Appeal the, an appeal of modifications to a permit that was remedied and the appeal was withdrawn. Stowe Elderly, Stowe Elderly Housing Corporation versus Zoning Board of Appeals, number two, and Housing Appeals Committee. An appeal for expansion of a permit modifying and modified and the appeal was withdrawn by Stowe Elderly Housing Corporation. Reynolds versus Stowe Elderly Housing Corporation, a Butters, appeal of permit modifications to, into Land Court. A dispute over groundwater discharge permit permitted to build wastewater plant to serve the Plantation One and Plantation Two development of eighty-eight units. That was settled, permitting the Elderly Housing Corporation to increase the number of dwelling units if and when the public water service became available. And we have now been told by attorneys representing the Butters, served notice on us on December eight, of claims that Stowe Elderly Housing Corporation violated the settlement agreement. And I just got an extensive letter from attorneys representing the Butters claiming violations of the settlement agreement. Attorney Amy Quessel of our office has been handling this case and Amy took the matter to the zoning board last night and reported it to them. I spoke with Amy and she said she reviewed all the claims that there were violations or disputes about the settlement agreement and she considered them to be without merit. In any event, that's now back before the Zoning Board of Appeals, another boomerang case. That essentially is the conclusion of my report. I think it's on the last page, I put a list of other projects that we did. Regional Task Force, Regional Police Task Force Policy, Uber Vendor Services Agreement, a code of conduct for board and committee members, and the Library Design Services Contract, which is in progress. So that is my legal litigation and legal services report to you.
Thank you so much. I know there is a few questions, so Hector, did you wanna go first and then I'll go around, Robin?
Sure. For the HSH lawsuit, you mentioned there's at stake is one million dollars. Is that what could be expected to be recovered if it does go to mediation?
We hope, yes. Yes.
Okay.
That's the value of our claim. Now, is mediation always gonna give you a hundred cents and a dollar? No.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. So when you go to mediation for any case, but particularly one with numbers like that, there are a number of things that you balance and one of them is what is the cost of taking it to trial? All right. So I'm just pulling numbers out of the sky. Let's say that the cost of taking it to trial is a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So a settlement of eight hundred fifty thousand dollars would be, you know, the same as going to trial and winning. So.
And for the thirty-three Elm Ridge Road property, I know someone is living in there now that has been foreclosed and are the residents about to be evicted?
I understand it has been foreclosed upon, yes. We're dealing with the mortgage holder who foreclosed.
Okay. And what is the location of the Great Road property that was donated? Were in Great Road?
Great Road property was located at, let's see.
It's, it's zero Great Road. It's behind, like, Great Road Firearms.
I mean, Stowe Cafe.
It doesn't have a water system yet. The donation was for a possibility of installing a public water supply.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it runs, it's sort of an odd shape behind those buildings.
They call it the fishlot because it looks like a, yeah.
Great, thank you.
I just realized why they call it that. Ellen, you had your hand up.
So I'm wondering, I guess with the two, with Habitat and with the SEHC, when someone files appeals, does that just halt any progress? Can they not do anything further on those projects until that appeal is resolved?
Depends entirely on what the nature of the appeal is. But yes, if, if work that is being undertaken is the subject matter of the appeal, the appeal would stand.
So, because, I mean, these, both of these properties seem, that's been the strategy, just keep postponing. If you keep appealing, then the project can't move forward. So, so they're stuck. Okay. And I guess, I mean, Collings is, I hadn't caught that when I read this the first time. I'm like, oh, no. So.
So if I can, so that is, they're questioning, the concern came up about the tanks, that the tanks are out there on the course every day and the planning board said that that's outside the scope of the initial settlement agreement and Collings does not feel that it is, that the tank driving follows the benefit of a museum. So that is, it hasn't come up in a while. Their operation tends to phase out in October. But I assume it will start up again in the spring when their operation really gets underway again.
So even though the agreement with, was, was ZBA, because it's outside the scope, it's now going to planning board. I mean, that's why the recommendation to planning So even though the agreement was, was ZBA, because it's outside the scope, it's now going to Planning Board. I mean, that's why the recommendation to Planning Board.
It's the original settlement agreement that was with the Planning Board.
Oh, it was Planning Board first.
The original settlement agreement. The second agreement that we settled was with the zoning board.
Thank you.
Courtney.
I don't think I have any questions.
All right, and.
I have no questions. I appreciated the summary and.
Yes.
Nice assistant and pointed out the key points. It was great. Well, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
It was nice to see you in person.
Nice to see you in person. It really is nice to get out, you know, it's nice to get back.
Do you have other ways to go to get home?
About an hour.
Oh, nice.
They live in the middle of Shaw, so it's an easy drive.
Less traffic now, less traffic.
It's a nice night for a drive.
Yeah.
Good to see you in person. I'll see you again in the spring.
Yes, the board will, hopefully our first January meeting will set the date of town meeting and I will let you know when it will be.
See you all then.
Thank you.
Wishes of the season, doll.
Thank you as well. Thanks, Bill. Oh, I have to give, sorry, I have to give them a heads up.
That's fine. Also, I now have lost my.
I will.
You what? I can't get into my email. Like it just, oh no, okay, now it's working. Sorry.
Okay, so do you want to do board member comments while we wait for the
Oh, yeah.
What Town Administrator time while we wait for the Planning Board to
Absolutely.
pause their meeting and join ours?
Did anyone have anything pressing that they wanted to talk about tonight?
Just a reminder, the library is doing a book sale, a two-dollar book.
Oh, yes.
Used book sales starting tomorrow and Thursday night.
And also they're not taking any more books.
They're not taking any more books. I guess we gave them enough, so. So if you're looking for books, go, go buy some cheap books.
Awesome. Where is it going to be?
At the library.
Is this different than the one they had in the spring?
Probably not. They get a lot of donations, so I think it.
All the ones in the spring got called off.
Yeah, this is, this is what they've collected since, just trying to. Yeah, so it'll be a smaller scale and at the library, but they are hoping to move a lot of inventory.
Awesome, good.
I would say that a library I worked with in Framingham was making a half million dollars a year on used book sales.
Wow.
So it gave me a new appreciation for like, holy cow, donate your books to the libraries. I mean, our library doesn't have the space, so I don't suggest that yet for, until the new library is.
That's for used books. Did anybody else have anything they wanted to say this evening?
I was going to remind everyone of the Light in the Darkness Lantern Workshop that NASJA is hosting on December twenty-first.
Excellent.
Especially in light of recent violence within our own town.
Are they, are they doing it on Zoom as well or is it just in person?
I think it's in person.
It's actually making things, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought I had seen like a template. If you couldn't join.
So you can.
So you could still do it. All right, cool. All right, Denise, how, oh, wait, hold on.
So we have our planning board members jumping on.
Hello, everyone.
It's the benefit.
Hello. I know, it is the benefit of Zoom, right? Hi, welcome Planning Board. So we're here having a joint board meeting with Planning Board this evening. And we've got three items that we were hoping that you all could talk to us about and we can talk together about. And the first one being any charter review comments that you had.
Charter review?
Charter review first, yeah, I think.
Yeah, so, you know, this is something that we had called out in our memo to you that we shared with you, the memo that we sent on charter review comments, and I think, I don't, I'm assuming everybody has that memo.
Yep.
Um, specifically section two of that memo for us, where we noted that there was a section in the charter that essentially said that select were responsible for maintenance and revision of any master plan developed. However, we were actually recommending that we remove that, and it's not to say we actually, you know, I think that the select board's input to the ma, the master plan or comprehensive plan are valuable, but more so that it was not, it was in conflict with mass general law. And we've tried to put the statements from the mass general law in there. And so, you know, I think we were looking to work with you on what language we, if you wanted to put some language in there about your participation in the comprehensive plan, we're open to that, but the exact statement of responsible for maintenance or revision of any master plan developed seemed to be in conflict with master law.
Okay. Um, did anyone want to have anything to say about that on this board? Any questions?
Seems to be the primary purpose of the, Ashman is getting in line with them.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I do think, of the charter.
Yeah, the charter, getting in line with master law, right?
Yeah, 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 it's again, yeah, yeah. Um, and I think, I think, and I'm not speaking for the entire board, but what I can kind of gain from the conversation that we had around it is that we just want to make sure that that the select board is still invol, is still involved in the process, like that it just is not, I think that the way that this board is right now, I think we really want to work with other boards. I think the idea of having kind of a comprehensive understanding of what other boards are doing is, is important to us, and so I, I just want to make sure that we don't lose that. It's not like a power grab and I don't want it to, to come across like that.
No, no, and it's clearly me, we, we think the select board's input to such a plan for the town
Right, right.
is clearly valuable.
Right, and I think that.
Necessary, um, so I'm not sure what type of language you would suggest putting in there, but, um.
I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with language as, again, like Ellen was saying, if, if the goal of the Charter Review Committee is to get us in line with mass general law, then it obviously makes sense to do that. I just think in practice, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, we're just sort of all included in some of the conversation. Hector.
I'm not a lawyer and I've never played one on TV, but I'm not sure that I see where the conflict is in this. It does, the Charter does put the responsibility of maintenance and revision of the master plan on the select board and the mass general law says that the Planning Board will do it. But it doesn't, I don't see that there's necessarily a conflict if the select board is responsible and works with the Planning Board to make sure that it is being done. Aren't we in compliance with the law?
Well, I think it's really about if the, if the master plan can only be accepted and voted by the Planning Board, then I guess I, we saw the conflict as, well, if the select board can't be responsible, if they can't actually, I guess, make it happen, so.
I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, Lori. If mass general law is calling out the Planning Board to be the body that discharges the, the outcome, that takes the votes, that does it, then for our charter to say that the select board is in that role is in conflict against it. Is that what I'm hearing you say, Lori?
That's, that's pretty much what we're saying is, you know, where mass general law says the Planning Board will establish the master plan, um, and, um, let's see. And, you know, and also vote to accept that shall be public, to become, for the, for the plan itself to become public record. I mean, I guess that's what we were interpreting there. Again, I don't think anybody on the Planning Board thinks that we shouldn't have select board input participation, um, so.
Right, right. Anywhere.
So I think that, that, um, the difficulty is the definition of responsible because responsible sort of implies that the buck stops with the board's selection and that it's our job to initiate the maintenance and revision of the master plan and then ask the Planning Board to do it. I think in this case, if we were to say something like the select board is responsible for coordinating with during the, that might be a way of doing it, I mean, but then the burden's on us to coordinate with the Planning Board as opposed to the Planning Board saying we have, we're starting these, these revisions and and then what does responsible mean? Does, does that mean we have to do the final review and approval? What does responsible mean?
Right.
Right?
Right.
So, you know, when you listen to the Supreme Court arguments, they nail, everything goes down to like one word. What is, what does adjacent mean, you know, in the Clean Water Act, but so, I, I also based on one of our earlier conversations where you said the, the select board shouldn't relinquish, I don't know if it was on this section, but shouldn't relinquish our, uh, appointing or, um, this isn't really appointing, but, so I went and looked at some of the select board requirements and responsibilities. I, I just did it quickly. I think, in my opinion, it's okay to eliminate that sentence because it's not really giving away an appointment authority, but I'm open to your, you know, you know this ten times better than I do. But that perhaps what it could be is that the Planning Board shall provide the select board with copies of and possibly, I don't know if we have to have a joint meeting for every little thing that gets maintained and replaced, but you know, that's where, what you're saying, Lori, is, you know, what, what's the language, what's the right language? But I guess Denise, from a select board mandate, is it okay to eliminate this sentence? Because I just want to make sure, if we all agree, I'm not saying, I'm just want to know what the select board responsibilities are with respect to this charter.
Well, that's what you're here to discuss.
It's not like, you know, the state law says select board shall be da-da-da-da-da, right? We're the appointing authority, no?
Well, not, not specific as it pertains to the comprehensive plan.
This is separate. Okay.
You know, there are other duties and powers of a select board as appointing authority as the chief executive officers.
I just didn't want to, if there was another section like that, appointing one, I wanted to make sure that.
No.
Okay, so in my opinion, I guess, just one vote here, that it makes sense to eliminate that. But then Lori summarized, I thought, I agree with Lori's summary, that we have to figure out some language that shows coordination without, that there be mutual, because the word responsible implies ownership in way.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, um, I don't know.
If we.
I mean, I think our intent for any comprehensive plan is to make sure that we're involving frankly all boards.
It's, it's a public.
It means the town.
Right, right.
But if you, you know, I, we're certainly, I think, I, I think the board would agree if we want to put some language in there that somehow we're going to coordinate with each other or, um,
The two boards shall.
you know, I, I'm not sure what the exact language is. I, I don't think anybody is going to object.
Yeah, okay, so we can, so there's someone on from the Charter Review Committee, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Right here.
Go ahead, thank you.
Before you begin, as I, if I may, for this discussion, I am stepping aside from my role as an associate on the Planning Board and I, all of my conversations here are as the chair of the Charter Review Committee. So I just want to make that, kind of make that statement.
Okay, just a quick process question. After this meeting, should we provide you additional comments?
What we have been asking for and what we would really appreciate, we know everybody's been working hard and is what language do you want?
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's been our, that's been our ask from the beginning is what do you want? And we're hoping that with this conversation, the two boards will come up with a single ask.
Okay, got it. Hector.
Karen?
Nope.
Sorry.
Oh, you're on mute, Karen?
Yeah, I didn't see the hand raised, I'm sorry.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
It sounds like everybody's on the same page as, and it sounds like it's a whole, a policy issue. And I'm just wondering if it really needs to be in the charter. We can adopt a policy that the select will be an integral part of the comprehensive plan.
I, I like that idea, Karen. I think essentially what it, what I'm hearing is that the care and custody of the process is going to be with the Planning Board and that the implementation, the actual work is going to involve multiple boards, especially.
Right.
The, and so I don't know if that's something as easy as that can just go in the charter. I think. Yeah, I, I don't know.
Oh, sorry, well, I just, so the difference between policy and charters, the charter holds more weight than policy.
Right. Right, right.
Okay, so if you, if you want it to be a mandate in the charter, we have to come up with language.
Right, right, right. Okay, Hector, you had something?
Yeah, and I hate to be the stump on, in the middle of the forest, but I still don't see what the issue is. The first section says that the the select board is responsible for the maintenance and revision of whatever in that case it says master plan, but comprehensive plan is created. The section seven dash seven C still puts the responsibility of the creation and review of the master plan on the Planning Board. So the charter as written now still seems to apply co-responsibility to both the Planning Board and the select board for the, the comprehensive plan. The Planning Board is still responsible for making the comprehensive plan, but the Stowe Select Board is responsible for implementing it.
I don't read it that way.
Or not implementing, what, what does it say?
About initiating.
Maintenance and revision of it. So it still seems to be a co-responsibility, which I'm okay for if we do, if we make a policy change that says both boards are responsible, I'm okay with that.
So I, where I'm seeing the issue and why we need to clarify it is the part of mass general law that says such plan shall be made and may be added to or changed from time to time by a majority vote of such Planning Board and shall be public record. And that's why I think that because there is a vote that is being taken by this, that elected body and that's not a vote that is being taken by the select board, that I think that's why it needs to be, because there's no voting power given to the select board for a comprehensive plan in the mass general law that I can see in the short bit that I'm reading. So I think that's the argument for having the Planning Board having it be their process. That's where I'm seeing the split. And so I, I don't feel like we're giving up any kind of involvement in it, and I do agree that we need to make sure that it's there, but I think just for simplicity sake and to have us tied as tightly to mass general law without there being the confusion that there is right now, which is causing all.
Well, the fact that we're having this debate is evidence that there is definitely confusion, so yes, it should be clarified.
That there's something a problem, right?
Right, right.
And I would agree that it should still be a joint responsibility because it is ultimately, the select board should be part of, involved in the implementation and execution of any comprehensive plan.
Right, um, do you want to?
Definitely.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in, so I think, you know, the three point two B three, I think you could easily remove from the powers and duties. But in my opinion, the seven dot seven C is where the shared responsibilities would remain. The master plan shall be reviewed at the direction of the Planning Board. And then it gives the select board the appointing authority so that it is a joint process. One board appoints, one board directs and oversees it. To me, that's where the joint collaboration comes in, is in seven seven C.
Right.
Uh, where you wouldn't need the three point two B three phrase. I think that could come out of the powers and duties of the select board. And then you're just looking at what to be put in under the Master Plan Committee section. Would be my opinion. That's where you have your collaboration identified.
Okay.
However, the Planning Board is also proposing
Together.
A complete rewrite of seven seven C as well.
But we did talk about.
I thought that was one of the ones we talked about too, yeah.
I wasn't sure if we were going to discuss it here as well.
Well, I think you did, but you put forward a version, the Planning Board put forward a version.
Right. Right.
I think your version was similar to what is existing, that you would maintain appointing authority. They would handle the rest of it, and I think their version was that they would have appointing authority or joint appointing authority.
Yeah. And I do think that it makes. And I do think that it makes part of it, the reason that I can see the select board maintaining the appointing authority is A, we do the appointments, most of the appointments, but B, um because of that, and it's that whole you know, five thousand dollar, five thousand foot view of what's going on, which is really what the select board's role should be, is sort of seeing um, I think that having that appointing authority for that board or just for for that committee makes sense for the select board to um retain, um as as
So would you object to a a a joint appointment?
Yes.
That's what I was thinking, there's two appointed positions, one would be the select boards and one would be the planning boards. The other two are pretty much assigned already.
Um yeah, I guess I wouldn't be opposed to that, I just, I wanna make sure.
I mean, I don't think because we appoint means that we have to choose, we're sort of the official mouthpiece of appointment, as it were.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there are times when we get a recommendation from the town administrator, we could get a recommendation from from the planning board, for instance, on the question of appointing
Mm-hmm.
um, making other appointments. Um, the planning board appoints your own voting associates, for instance, we just don't have any part of that, that's internal.
Mm-hmm. Right. Right.
Um.
We also typically appoint our own subcommittee members.
Yeah.
Um, this just happens to be
Right.
Yeah.
um, the one thing that is, you know, shared or um somewhere else.
So like for the makeup of this committee we're gonna get suggestions, nominations from each of the, for the other five members, so there's gonna be a volunteer or a nomination from the select board and then the other um contributing boards are gonna nominate somebody and we're gonna make the appointment, so I see it as a formality, we're, so you could nominate, you know, we could, we could say that you know, you're gonna nominate and and, you know, I don't, I don't know that that has to be codified, who nominates those two at-large members to the to the comprehensive plan.
And and I think some of our discussion really has to do with you know, we, we are thinking that this time around, because it's been so long, um that will, you know, the the comprehensive plan update needs to be really a full plan rewrite, but we'd like to set it up or structure it so that ongoing um, it could be sort of an ongoing living thing, which is um every year or two that there's pieces that are updated so that we never end up being in a place where it's sat on a shelf for ten years, and not to say we haven't taken any action, I don't mean that at all, but that it's ten years old and we haven't updated it at all.
Right.
Um, so once we do this update, we're hoping that uh we take a little bit of a different approach, and I think our our suggestion of, you know, appointment or joint appointment has to do with, um you know, after this time around, maybe the next time will be a very specific focus, and so our thought was, we were looking to have input on the appointment based on whatever that focus may be, so just to give you some context of why would we suggest such a thing, I just wanted to put that out there, um and and you're right, it's really only a matter of the two at-large members.
Yeah, and it's, I think as far as the appointment stuff goes for us, it's now becoming a process thing where we've got a set process of how we are doing appointments, and so it, I I think it just makes sense. Um, certainly to get your input, but I think just having us be the appointing body just makes it cleaner, um since I don't know, um, I don't wanna, I know we need to tie this off this evening, or that's the hope, um we do have two other things I we, I wanna talk about before you guys have your public hearing, so if, does anyone else have anything they wanna add about charter review before we move on?
Away from this memo? We're moving away from this memo?
Well, no, I wanna, while we have them here, I wanna talk about the comprehensive plan timeline
Okay.
and the responsibilities, and also I wanted them to give a quick um, update on their warrant articles that they're gonna be bringing to us, they have a public hearing at eight fifteen, so we're, that's why, that's why we're kinda under the gun.
I see. So are we making a decision on the uh maintenance revision?
We can.
Oh, but you're saying not right now?
Um, nope, that I was gonna, I was asking for any other questions, I just wanna kind of try and wrap this up
Or
so that we can move forward and do that, just cuz there is a bit of a time crunch.
Then I, do do you wanna?
And so Meg, I think the public hearing is at eight o'clock.
Oh.
Unfortunately.
Okay, um, well then I guess we will
So how do we resolve this?
The warrant articles can wait.
The warrant articles can probably wait till January, are we having them back in January?
Yeah, so they'll be at your first January meeting, because we have um the engineer coming in to talk about the Hudson Great Road intersection, so they're on the agenda anyways.
To Lake Huron. Okay.
Um, so depending, I think when Valerie and I spoke, we listed them in order of priority, so if the town meeting warrant needed to be in January.
Okay.
Um, I guess it depends how much the discussion there will be under item two, the comprehensive plan timeline and responsibilities.
Okay.
But I think you need to get through this in order for the charter review committee to continue their work.
Right. Okay.
Um, so to me, this one is the priority
Okay.
of the evening.
Alright, well then, we've got a few minutes.
Are you looking for motions, or what are we doing?
Um, I just wanted to see if anybody else had anything else to say first, before we move any of your hand up.
Yeah, I I just, I think the appointment should just stay the way it is, I I think, uh you said it it's cleaner, but it's also, that is our, like, you know, as
Yeah. Yeah. Bread and butter.
that is our authority, and I think separating it, the planning board has a lot of influence on the master plan, they don't, I think, you know, yes, consulting, but I think we should we should stay as the only appointing authority for those.
Okay. Um, alright.
So are we gonna solve the maintenance revision?
Um
So I can tell you, so I'm looking at the, and I know um Debbie could certainly talk about this, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that the charter review has put together already. Um, one of the proposed comments from the Charter Review Committee themselves was to strike that section um, three point two B three, um because the, that responsibility does fall under the planning board.
Okay.
Um, if you support that, then I think you could vote that and and then could at least check that one off.
Okay. Okay.
And then depending on where you stand with the appointing authority, and depending on where the planning board stands, it would then be up to the Charter Review Committee to decipher that and figure out what they wanna put forward.
Okay.
They're hoping it can be a collaborative effort, but it would then be up to the planning, uh the Charter Review Committee to take both positions and figure out what's going forward.
Okay, um I will take a motion on section three point two B three.
Miss Clark? I'll make a motion that the, that we take the planning board's recommendation to remove the sentence about the select board being responsible for the maintenance and provision of any master plan. I could add a part two to that, which says that the planning board while the planning board, I'm reading the last sentence in that section, while the planning board is the local body with statutory authority to create and approve comprehensive plans any revisions may be coordinated with the, or shall be coordinated with the board select board.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Well, it seems like it was recommended that we just delete the section, so I'm, but they were open to, okay.
A revision.
A revision to allow
Okay.
And I'm basically reading, well, I made changes to it.
Okay. Um, any further discussion?
You can change it though, I mean.
Can we review what the motion was?
So the motion was to take the planning board's recommendation to remove the sentence regarding our responsibility for the maintenance and revision of the plan, master plan
Sorry.
any master plan developed and to add a sentence while the planning board is the local body with statutory authority to create and approve comprehensive plans revisions should be or uh should be coordinated with the select board.
Okay, second.
Okay.
Second, good, okay. Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, abstain.
Keep standing.
And Ellen abstains, okay.
I just gonna, I assume we don't have to worry about, I mean, charter committee gets to move it, cuz it's not, it shouldn't be in the Board of Selectmen section anymore.
Right.
Right. Okay, okay, um as far as uh section seven point seven C, it sounds like um it sounds like the select board does not want to strike it.
We can. It's eight o'clock.
I know.
Can I make a comment Megan?
Yeah, absolutely Lori.
Um, so can we do the flip? Meaning, if you're gonna be the appointing authority for the um committee, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can you at least um add any language in there that say you'll coordinate or at least get input from the planning board?
Mm-hmm. Yep. I would be okay with that.
I think that's what we proposed in our submission changes, wasn't it?
I don't think so.
I don't think we did, but
Oh. I remember recommending that, but maybe it didn't make it through.
Okay, um, can I get a motion? To do what Lori just proposed, so it would be the select board um would remain the appointing authority, but there would be language in there that um
Yes, okay.
In coordination.
In consultation.
In consultation and coordination with the
Okay.
planning board.
So for section three point two D.
What is it?
Section seven point seven C?
No, this is appointment, right?
This is an addition to the
Oh, right, sorry, that's in section
Section three point two, subsection D.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh.
To add
I thought you were doing section seven seven.
Well, but that was, but Lori's suggestion was to
But that was, yeah, yeah. So section three point two D.
I will make a motion that there be language included to how did you say that Megan?
Consultation.
Consultation, consultation and coordination with the planning board.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hector?
No.
What?
You're not getting any input?
I'm sorry, three point two D?
It's the appointing, the one
But the the section specific to the appointment of the comprehensive plan is seven seven C.
No, but but Lori, I thought, maybe I was misunderstood, Lori, you were talking about the consultation was on the appointing of the two members?
Yeah.
Right, so that was the three point
But I think that should go under seven seven C where it says the select board shall appoint a special committee of seven members comprised of
Then committee, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
I would say add it to seven seven C versus adding it to a random appointment, appointment section, because that actually gives
Right.
appointing authority to select, to speak to the planning board on every appointment that you make.
Oh, right, okay, right, alright, sorry.
Yeah.
So I would put it under seven seven C, um so it's specific to
Okay.
And we don't want that, so
No. Then your meetings get really long.
Well, you're trying to flip.
Can I, can I just get a, so was your motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was, I just, and I screwed it up, so I apologize.
First was Okay. Um can you just make that motion one more time, then we will let you guys go, and we'll take a quick vote on it.
Okay, but which option?
It's it's seven
No, I know, but the planning board offered two options for the revisions.
It was
I don't think we've
I don't think we took either of the options. I don't think we took either of the options.
Yeah, I have a second. Sorry.
Because it's very different.
Because she moved the wrong
I moved the wrong section.
Thing.
It was just the wrong section, sorry.
It was the wrong section, yeah.
Might I make? Would it be okay if I made the motion?
Yeah.
True.
I moved that we asked the Charter Review Committee to revise seven seven C to add wording that we coordinate with the planning board for the appointments, for the appointed positions.
I'll take a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's unanimous. Alright, have a good public hearing and we'll see you in January and happy holidays.
Oh, be a good morning.
Nope, Debbie is waving her hands like she's gonna come through the screen. Hi. Debbie's muted.
No.
No.
Yes, am I muted now?
Yep.
Okay, um, couple things, the main thing is, when will we see what you folks are asking for? Um, Denise, are you writing it down, are you gonna be resubmitting to us the changes that the select board is asking for?
Um, I wasn't planning to, cuz you were here tonight, but I certainly can.
Yes, please, we want it all in writing, specifically what you're looking for, um, and we want, we would really like the specifics, we're not, we're not here to make decisions on your part, we wanna hear what what you, the select board want. We then as the Charter Review Committee will be taking the input and deciding whether or not, you know, we'll take it under advisement, but we wanna hear what you want specifically. We don't, you, I don't want you to leave it up to us to fill in in the blanks for you, you need to fill them in, tell us what you're looking for we'll take it under advisement and then determine what's the right thing to do with the town.
Okay. Um, alright.
Alright, it looks like we'll catch up in January on the
Sounds good.
Bye.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. So, Madam Chair.
Hold one second, I'm just gonna let everybody
What?
Just gonna let everybody move on off, okay, so we can still talk about this, not with the planning board.
Okay. Okay, fine.
Um, and would you, would everyone be okay, let, just wordsmith it so that we can give Denise actually
So we're wordsmithing it.
words to write down to send to them?
I I was just gonna wait for Joyce to write up the minutes exactly what you guys have said.
Oh, alright, that's fine, absolutely.
That was
Okay.
You just said exactly what you wanted to reflect, so
I don't know why we would have to write it down, but okay, fine, great.
Take it down.
When when Joyce writes the minutes, I will submit that to the Charter Review Committee.
Perfect, great, just wanted to make sure that we didn't need to do, and we had the conversation and we can move on.
Okay.
That's why I was confused by it.
Sounded sounded to me like, like
Sorry.
we said something like, we wanted to say that
Yes.
and she wants verbatim.
This is exactly what it needs to say, which I understand completely.
Chapter seven seven C will say X.
Absolutely, but yes, okay.
But isn't the Charter Review Committee the one that creates the words from the ideas we've
Not this one.
Not like this particular one, okay, so, are we ready? I think we're almost ready to push through the EDIC mission statement after forty seven operations.
Come on.
Yes, do we need to go back?
I just don't understand what there's other questions in this memo, are we just ignoring them?
I oh, the memo that came or the charter review stuff?
The charter review memo.
Charter review memo.
Um, I, because we were on a time constraint with that particular board, uh we can only get to what we can get to as far as
Yes.
like input that they want from us, we have put forward our own input, if they have questions or like I think the idea was that our two boards were going to get together and discuss things that we may or may not have mutual interest on, but we don't have to talk about all of it, those were the ones that I felt like we had the
So we don't have to
biggest sort of head banging with and we needed to work out.
That's fine, good, now let's fin- finalize that other thing.
Um, yes.
Do we, do we wanna just make sure that everybody in the room agrees with you just quickly, that
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Just
Yes.
reading through the memo, I mean, or having read it before the meeting, does anything stand out?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, just so that, so that the record of our meeting reflects that we've talked about it, and we didn't
Um Yes, yes.
Well, it seems like we covered everything that the planning board wanted us to particularly look in terms of their positions, right, and I don't
What about quest, section, question five, planning board office?
Am I looking at the wrong, maybe I'm looking at the wrong memo, I'm looking at the one that was
You're looking at the one that's
You're looking at the one that says memo, there's something underneath it.
Yeah.
That's the one.
Um, so if I may, I think sort of section five, a lot of their comments are going from master to comprehensive, um
No, they're bullet point pi- five, section seven point seven C.
Well, that's the one we just, we do.
Well, that's the one we just talked about.
Right, so did we choose one of those options?
No, we gave them a third option.
No, we gave them a third option.
No, we gave them the third option and that's what we voted on, which is to keep appointing authority and to consult with them on who basically is on the committee.
Okay. Alright.
Or the, whatever. Um, yeah, these are, keep in mind, the the list that's here are not the ones that they wanna talk about with us, it's
Right, I understand.
the, these are the, all the ones that they're submitting, so, but the, the ones that we wanted to talk about with them were the ones that we had also submitted
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
so that we were on the same page, instead of having the planning board and the select board submitting different things and then having the Charter Review Committee have to try and figure it out.
Done.
Um, okay, so, and then in our January meeting, I would just say Denise, if it's possible to resubmit this, or just put this same memo from them in our packet again.
The first one?
The Ja- the one that says sto- Town of Stow Planning Board memo, planning board updates.
Yes, you want that.
That one, can that be in our packet again, because that is what I'd like to refer to when we have, cuz we just didn't have enough time to talk to them.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's all their updates, that's their warrant articles.
Is that in our packet?
It is in our packet this time.
It was the before the charter review.
Yeah, I just, I wanna have it in the packet next time so that we all can kind of go through it at the same time and have the same information again.
No.
Alright, who's ready to have an economic development
Alright, right, right.
Yeah.
an industrial committee mission statement approved, um
So what did they change, just these couple little things?
Just the red lines, they just wanted to make sure it had an industrial and um lower G government and Um.
I think that was it.
That's.
Yep.
So what we can do this evening is approve that, um again. The next part of this is going to be coming up with goals for the EDIC, um. And so that can be, I mean, I don't know if you wanna wait till we have a board in place or a committee in place um to talk about goals, or if I'm I'm opening this up to the rest of this board.
Well, um.
So the goals are different goals than what we did brainstormed?
Um, no, well, so we have a, we have a memo in here from Valerie.
Yes.
From the planning board.
Yes. So these are the planning board's goals, so you're gonna be brainstorming, we should do our own goals.
So. These are the planning board's goals, that's what they brainstorm, or we can look at theirs and see if they're in line with ours and then we can add to them, but yes.
I thought we did that, we did.
So you have, um you've sort of discussed it, but I think both Tom from the EDIC and the planning board are thinking that once the mission statement is set, then this board should be meeting either on an annual basis or biannually with the EDIC and establishing goals for the upcoming
Mm-hmm.
term, um giving them some direction on, like the planning board said, you know, creation of a doing business guide or maintaining a business inventory, giving them some focus so that they have priorities to set, um and some guidance, because they are
That you have some kind of towards.
sort of an ancillary board without, um they don't have dedicated staff, so they're, you know, they function like some of our other boards that just are supposed to go and run with their tasks, but their tasks can be very wide, so I think sort of narrowing that to what the select board's priorities are would be helpful and give them some direction.
Mm-hmm.
So it seems to me there's this whole conversation about who do they report to, and if we give them goals, then they're reporting to us.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So.
Well, and you would still be the appointing authority, so I think that.
Right, right.
Right.
Right, but it seems to me that if the if the planning board has a lot of ideas about what their goals might be, then it and they may be different than ours or or just, I mean, just like not conflicting, but but they came up with, you know, A B C and we came up with X Y Z, and so
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
in the in the name of collaboration, is there a way without making it too complex that we we take all of that and somebody hands it to the EDIC?
It does seem like we are still, I mean, that dilemma, it's like, yes, we are the appointing authority, but we've always been the appointing authority and yet it wasn't clear if they were prior thoughts or not, so, I mean, I like that Tom said, yeah, it doesn't belong in the mission, but we really do need to resolve this.
They need to know who's who's helping them, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need a mint?
Um. I will say in the past, cuz I was on the lower village revitalization subcommittee, and so a lot of the the same members were on the economic development um and industrial committee, um and so it did fall into the planning board, and so the planning board would come to the meetings, they would set the agenda, they would do the whatever, um I don't know that that's how that's going to move forward, um if I'm understanding correctly, and so I, as far as staff support goes.
Right, but keep in mind, the staff don't work for the planning board, so if the planning department staff assist.
No, I. Right. That's something totally different.
But they fall under the regular hierarchy of the town government.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay, that is a very good clarification, so, um. But, okay.
I'm lost.
Oh, I I would just, I mean, I do feel like, um. I I guess one of my concerns about EDIC has been, it has been totally focused on lower village, there are other business areas in town, and I
Mm-hmm.
and I, you know, I don't, I don't know where that comes from, but I think somehow I feel like, and someone said earlier, you know, we're the the you know, or you said, you know, we're the big, big, supposed to be the big picture people way up, and I think the EDIC is
Mm-hmm.
it's working with towns and boards and committees, like not just the planning board, so that's why I I keep coming back to, like, I really do think they should report to the select board and um and that, yes, just like we just said, you know, of course, when we start developing the goals and whether that's before or after we appoint new members to the committee
Mm-hmm.
that the planning board has some representatives, that particularly the lower village people who were, um have been involved in thinking about it, so um but I do think it should stay as reporting to the select board, if we're gonna decide that tonight, I don't know.
But had they ever reported, I I mean, I, in the time that I've been here, they've never.
Reported to anybody.
Reported to anybody.
No, but I think that goes back to the goals and, you know, how many boards and committees you appoint, they don't come here and report anything to you.
Right. That's true, right, right.
Right.
Um, but I think.
Of course we have.
So if we're asking them to do that as part of their goals.
Right. Right, but I think there has been this sort of blurred line that, um because they've had planning department staff and because the planning board has been driving some of the lower village conversation and that they've naturally
Right.
feel they answer to the planning board, but they never have because you've always been the appointing authority, so I think
Mm-hmm. Got it.
having them come in regularly, you know, even if it's once a year, but I think even going through this goal setting and asking what they're working on and giving them, you know,
Okay. Mm-hmm.
reminding them that we have other businesses other than lower village and getting some ideas, I mean, you know, you could just look in
Mm-hmm.
even the Stow Independent, and it talks about what Bolton's Economic Development Committee is working on, and you can look and see what other surrounding towns are doing and
Right, yeah.
it can be very small and there can be larger things, so I think there's a lot of ideas.
Right. Yeah.
But I think what I've experienced in my, I mean, and I know there was COVID, um but in my time here so far, it's because they haven't had that direction, it's been sort of like
Right. Right.
you know, this is what you do and go figure out how to do it, and then they're getting, you know, then it's the whole water in lower village and they're getting involved in that and
Right.
to me, that's not their purview, it should be focusing on.
Right, right.
We don't have a lot, but focusing on all the businesses in town and.
Right.
really figuring out what you want this committee to do.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Hey, can I say just one more thing, I, I mean, cuz I've been thinking about this, cuz it has been sort of a mess and not being as effective, is that it's also one of their charges is to you know, propose or get feedback on what parts of, say, planning board regulations aren't working in favor of getting small businesses here, so
Right, right.
that would be another reason why we're a little more of, I won't, I, objective, I mean, we we don't have that as our primary focus, so it's um, it's maybe
Yeah.
give them the opportunity.
Well, and I think it also, I. It's figuring out how to have them do that, but not being like spokespeople for the town. It, I think that some of the issues have been, you know, things may have been promised or things have been, you know, discussions have been
Right.
had that like were not necessarily appropriate for what they should have been doing, and so I think that that's the other concern, if you're having people go out and talk to community members and business owners and saying, what do you need, what do you want, like that it doesn't have that kind of tit for tat weird connotation to, like I don't know, I'm trying to say this objectively, but you just have to be very careful as to presenting things to businesses as to what we can offer them or what you can do to work with them to get a thing on their own.
Isn't that what the definition is of advisory committee?
Yes.
And that's been.
And I'm just saying that.
Report to us.
That that's what I want to happen, but that's not necessarily been the history of.
Right. Right.
Yes.
Well, I think in that fashion, it's even more important that they appoint, uh they report to you because they should, in fact, to Ellen's point, if they're looking at zoning bylaws and how it affects small business, they should be able to go to the planning board and advocate on behalf of the businesses without feeling that they report to the planning board or they're
Right.
you know, or they, if there's a board of health matter, they should be, again, that's my feeling, if like the sign bylaw, to me, we should have a committee that meets with business owners and says how can we advocate on your behalf?
Mm-hmm.
instead of having, trying to coordinate business owners to come to a seven o'clock at night meeting, um that, to have that sort of advocates
Mm-hmm.
and have them be more impartial that they don't report to, I mean, you all don't make policy as far as businesses go.
Right.
That's what the other boards are for, so I I think to have that separation and that they could come to you and say um you know, there's some bylaws that are really affecting businesses, you know, then you could choose to talk to
Right.
meet with planning board, zoning board, board of health and say, you know, we're we're concerned about how this might affect some businesses, what is your
Right.
thought process, um but I really see them being a independent of all the other boards that really interact with boards and um
Mm-hmm.
businesses in town.
Mm-hmm.
because they should be advocates when they feel they need to be.
Right.
But in a sense, going back to the, you know, further, is they don't really have any authority.
But that.
Mm-hmm. Right.
They don't have the jurisdiction per se.
Right, right.
They're just, they're information gathering and advocacy and they're essentially a liaison between all these parties.
Right, and then presenting an advocacy. Yeah. Yep.
But even that advocacy could get them into trouble, because what happens when advocating for the business goes against the interests of the town?
Well, but if that's their charge is to advocate for businesses, I don't, it shouldn't get them in trouble, it should, you know, you might not agree with them, but
Right.
to me, their role is advocating on behalf of business or bringing in business.
Right, right.
But they're also supposed to have in mind the 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 town's interests, and so they they've got this, they've got
Advocate.
The law, yeah.
two hats, one on, you know, sort of woven together that they're, or they're they're, they've got two masters, they've got us and and the businesses that they have to serve.
Mm.
Not an easy role.
And this mission seems to say that they'd be advocating for both the businesses and the town.
Exactly.
Right, to try to find them.
Right.
To find, yeah.
So instead of being of being, uh taking one side or the other, they have to be able to understand both points of view and be more of a mediator.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And between being an advisory committee that should somewhere be specified, they report to the Board of Selectmen, I would say that that leans their advocacy, they can be advocates for both, but if at any point in time there's a conflict their advocacy has to be for the town.
Sure.
I don't, so I don't.
Well, their interest is in in, if their interest is in being reappointed, then they would represent the town's point of view so that we would be inclined to keep them on the committee.
Well, and I don't know where they would be advocating against the town, I mean, to me, the advocacy on behalf of the town is trying to entice businesses to come into town.
Right.
Businesses that meet the zoning of the neighborhood where someone's looking, I don't know where else they would be advocating for the town.
I'm like thinking of a, for instance, with all the discussions that's been going on about drive-throughs in the town.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody wants to put a business right on one seventeen with a drive-through that empties out onto one seventeen serving burgers and donuts.
Mm-hmm, so that's like totally against all the zoning that we have right now.
Exactly, so do they now advocate for the business and say the town needs to change and allow for the bylaw to do that, or do they advocate for the town and tell the business, that ain't gonna happen?
Well, no, if they if they wanna advocate for a bylaw change, then they certainly can do that, anybody can do that, yeah.
I don't think.
Right.
They could stand at the town meeting and say, I, we represent the EDIC and we think this would bring business to town and we think it's beneficial.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ultimately, they don't have decision making, it's up to the planning board, the select board and town meeting, but I think they could do that, if they feel
Right, it's town meeting, well, yeah, right.
Okay.
Yep.
same thing with the sign bylaw, if they say, you know, the proposed sign bylaw is just not feasible and it's not helping our businesses, we'd like to see it expanded. They could advocate to do that.
Right.
But they would understand that al- the only thing they could tell the businesses will advocate, but we can't make that.
Yes, yes. Yes, absolutely, yeah.
They can't tell you it will happen.
They can't say, yes, we're gonna put drive-throughs.
Can't say, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna put a drive-through in because that's not.
Yeah.
But also their their role to me would be like, let me tell you what it will take to change the bylaw, you know, and it could be, or they'd say, I can connect you with someone
Exactly, exactly, I'm gonna walk you through step by step, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
who can explain to you how much work that will.
Yes. Yeah, I think that's the part of the advocacy for the town that I was looking for.
Right. Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think that that's, I mean, and I think the people who are on it or, you know, the the goal of the people who are on it is that they know enough and they don't need to know chapter and verse of every bylaw, but they need to have a general sense of how things work.
Right.
Yeah.
Um as far as the reporting goes, I don't think that needs to go, well, I've got two, two issues with it. One, I don't think it needs to go in the mission statement, just cuz I don't think it needs to go in, but two, any changes we make to this right now, this is not getting passed until like mid-January, cuz it's gonna have to go back to the planning board, it's gonna have to go, like, I really would like to move this forward, um.
Oh, in all, in all fairness, it doesn't have to go back to anybody, you are the authority that sets the mission statement of the EDIC.
Yeah, we get to decide, remember with the select board?
Alright, fine.
So you can set it to me if you have a minor change, fine.
Yeah. I just, but that's not a minor, is a minor change that to add a reporting structure into the mission statement?
But what you just said, you didn't wanna do that.
No, 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 I'm just saying if if we were to do that.
Well, I don't think you.
Oh.
I don't think you need to, but I think everybody, I think everyone's clear that it is the select board.
Okay.
I think the planning board understands it's the select board.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, unless I've missed that somewhere.
No.
So are we advocating that somewhere in the goals, it says that they report to the select board?
I don't know that that needs, I think just in fact that you are gonna reaffirm that you are the appointing authority and then therefore.
I think that we're gonna. Yeah. Yeah.
And then that's implied.
And we're gonna call them into our meeting to ask them and to set goals, it's should be clear at that point, yeah.
Okay. So it's implied, okay.
You'll you will reaffirm that.
So.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's this indented paragraph that you'd like us to read.
Yeah, just as an advisory committee, yeah.
And the board did vote, or I don't know if you actually voted at your last meeting, you supported everything except for the new red words.
That's right.
We have, yeah.
So everything has already been supported.
Re-proposed.
Yes.
Or proposed the changes.
Right, I remember the debating the language of Stowe's small town.
Although I'm realizing what is, what is here, it needs to be the EDIC shall work with Stowe boards and commissions, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
That also needs to be changed.
But that.
Is that a typo or is that?
I think it's, that's a typo, yeah.
The second sentence.
And that's just something that we can do unilaterally.
That we can. Just clean it up and post.
Yes.
So just, sorry to drag this out, but just, just reading this one more time.
Yeah, no, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Starting with the EDIC that needs an I, shall work with the, um through the end.
Mm-hmm.
I find that relatively unclear, because it said shall work with Stowe boards and commission Stowe businesses and residents to balance Stowe's blah blah blah, to achieve these goals. Um. And so forth, but it's so, it, they're working with everybody and and achieving certain goals.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And so it doesn't sort of imply a strong reporting structure to the select board at all.
It just means you should coordinate with, it's irrelevant to reporting structure.
I understand, but what I, what I mean is that there is nothing, I don't think there's anything concrete anywhere that says that we are the the people they report to, and so if we think that's true, clear, I'm just arguing that I don't think it is.
Okay.
But it's not clear, it's not meant to be, in my opinion, I think it's clear by by virtue of the fact that we're the appointing authority, so it's a whole separate section that clarifies that.
Okay.
This is just the mission statement that has no, says nothing about reporting?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So so basically you're saying that by, you know, like in the charter, by being the appointing authority.
Duh, I don't know that, but.
Well, it's somewhere that by being, by appointing them that they report to.
By the fa- by virtue of the fact that we are their appointing third authority, that means that we can appoint and disappoint. Not appoint.
Um I also think, and not that we have any other ones in front of us right now, but I I don't know if there are any other mission statements for any other committees that have the reporting structure built into the mission statement, so I think that it just, I think you're right, by virtue of the fact that we're the appointing authority, then we can call them in, so I will take a motion to appro- so I will take a motion to approve this mission statement.
I move to approve the mission statement for the EDIC based on the jointly crafted version discussed at this meeting.
Second.
One typo.
Yes.
Along with the changes we proposed.
Yeah. Second, alright, any further discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I I think that the points that Valerie made um about the the brainstormed goals from the planning board were all great, and so, um
Mm-hmm.
I'm glad that we're ticking the mission off the list and.
We can grab those goals and put them in the thing.
There's still more to do.
Absolutely, um alright. All in favor?
Why did you hesitate?
I don't know, I, 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 uh that's unanimous.
Traumatic pause.
A dramatic pause for sure.
Right, next on the list. Denise.
Yes.
We're gonna go back to you, actually.
Oh, yes, I forgot all about it.
Denise, town administrator update.
Um, thank you, so. As of December eighth, we have six cases of COVID in town for four point five, zero five percent positivity rate.
Wow.
Which is still much lower than the state and county average, they are both closer to seven and eight percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we still have COVID tests available in the town building, we're looking to get more to the library, the ones that were in the library are gone, but we still have some here, and we just got another email today that the state is giving out another round of at-home COVID tests, so look for those and we'll replenish those in the Council on Aging and Library when we do get them in.
Right.
Uh the state certified our fiscal twenty-three tax rate as discussed at our last meeting, it will be eighteen thirteen per thousand. Um so you can all expect those bills to go out right after Christmas, um.
Mm-hmm.
The last week, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee met with a number of residents from Gleeson Dale. It was a fully public meeting, but the.
It was a fully public meeting, but the majority of the folks, this room was filled, um, were from Gleesondale to discuss some pilot traffic measures in the area, you should have a memo in your correspondence discussing them. Um, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee is putting forward two pilot programs, uh, to address the uh, traffic on Marlborough Road. So what they will be doing in the near future will be putting, um, one, um, I think have to remember what the first phase is, um, the first phase is they're gonna be blocking off Marlborough Road from, um Gleesondale, so you will not be able to take a left onto Marlborough and directing traffic to, I guess it's called Marlborough Street, is the next little left. Um, and then in January, they're gonna come before this board and ask for a stop sign to be put in. At which point they're gonna close the, they're looking to close Marlborough Road from Marlborough Street to Gleesondale in both directions. Um, to try and cut down on the speeding and the traffic and the concerns from the residents with there being not many sidewalks and, um, that is one of the most complained about areas in town. Um, I think the overwhelming response from the residents was they were very supportive, some liked Pilot One, some liked Pilot Option Two. I think this will be the best of both worlds, um, with the funding that you approved for ARPA for the traffic safety, they got a new traffic counter that's been down there, so they've taken, um, uh, data without any of these new measures, then they will take them for Pilot Program One, Pilot Program Two, re-meet with the neighborhood and figure out what if any of these have worked and have alleviated some of the concerns. Um, at which point they will come back before you to make a permanent, uh, traffic recommendation.
Okay.
I will tell you, this stemmed from a meeting that we had, um, myself, Police Chief, Planning Director. I think it was the three of us with members of, uh, the Town of Hudson looking to put a truck restriction on Marlborough Road and they would not, they were not very supportive. Um, so this is our way of addressing some of the truck traffic without going through the required, um, joint town approval process. So this will force some of the trucks, um, the thought is some of the larger trucks may not be able to take a left onto Marlborough Street because of the narrow, so they'll have to go down to the lights. So it will sort of drive the truck traffic in the direction that we're hoping for. Again, it'll all be a trial, um, I think the first one, they're looking probably thirty days, um, and then they'll look for the second one thirty to sixty days to really get a good understanding before they're ready to come back and make some recommendations to you all, but um, just be aware, you will start seeing some signs, we will put out a press release when that's happening just to make folks aware, but, um, they will be doing some work down there to see what we can do to alleviate some of those issues.
Okay.
Um, I have been working with the MWRA as they are undertaking a feasibility study of expanding into Metro West. Um, this is very, very wishful thinking.
Yeah.
Um, I am, I'm now on their task force, um. So we had a meeting, I had a meeting one-on-one with them today, the task force, I guess, started last week, so I was on that. Um, we are the only town right now in the task force that is a fully private well community. So the other communities that are interested around us, Maynard, um, Hudson, um, you know, they have a distribution system. So much of what MWRA will have to do for Stowe is hypothetical, they're gonna have to try and find a way to figure out what a community our size with multiple golf courses and farms and residential properties would need in usage and determine how that factors into the feasibility study. I did ask if when the time comes, they could provide us with, um, a couple of options. Um, one would be, you know, if we, you know, won Powerball and had a hundred billion dollars to run water mains throughout the whole town, uh, what that would look like in terms of connecting to MWRA, um, the other would be, um, I've been told that Maynard is very anxious to join MWRA. Um, so I've asked them to give us an option of just extending from the Maynard line into Lower Village to provide some water down there if the study, if our water feasibility study comes back with unsatisfactory results. Uh, so they will certainly do that, they will look at that, um, they did say there'll, it'll be at least ten years before they're ready to even bring water anywhere into this area because they have to figure out how to get their pipes to Maynard, if Maynard were to, um, sign on. So, just so you're aware, there are conversations going on, a- again, I think it's, it's, it's completely hypothetical. Um, they, the only town they could point me to is East Ham, which I think started in twenty seventeen going from private wells to a public water system and they're doing like phases of the town, so only a small portion has been completed because they are, cuz it's just cost prohibitive. Um, about six years ago, it was a million dollars per mile to run water mains. Um, so factor that across an entire town and then figure out who, you know, you'd have to deal with better men, some people tying in and um, you know, we're talking tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars. So just, I'll, I'll let you know, um, they're expecting, I, they sent me a calendar invite for all of twenty twenty-three, so I don't know how long the study is taking place, but I think they've, I think it's like sixteen towns that are now involved. Um, I was the only non-water department person on the task force because they all have water systems and water departments, but I'll keep you posted.
No question.
Um, what's driving this?
I think the MWRA has realized they have more water than they have need for right now, so they're looking to start expansion. And when they put together this feasibility study, more and more communities wanted in on the study.
So we're gonna get water from Western and Central Mass, shoot it all the way to Boston and then come all the way back?
Well, we did talk about, um, their nearest, so I asked them where their nearest, um, connection would be and they said Marlborough, but they didn't think Marlborough had the capacity
Okay.
to extend to Maynard, um, they said Framingham might have the capacity. Um, I don't know, they said all roads go through Sudbury because anyway they tried to come here would have to go through Sudbury, so now Sud- Sudbury is involved in the study as well.
Of course, wow.
Um, so I don't know that you'd have to go all the way, but
Yeah. Yeah.
The number of communities, I mean, acting conquered, um, as soon as it got to Metro West, and then Hudson joined in and then we got word of it and I said, I don't even know if we, it's worth it because I have no data to share with you, um, but they said it, it doesn't hurt to just be involved and
Right.
you know, hear what we're talking about and hear what the possibilities are and we'll just include some hypothetical scenario for Stowe.
Right.
So.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it, well, I guess I have a disagreement, is it really worth your time, I mean it just seems like, uh, it's a very long, very unlikely for us, so I just, I'm just concerned as, as like all the things you have on your plate to go to a meeting that, it's talking about water.
So I will say, um, they did just decide, so, um, originally they were planning to meet twice a month and they've just got, they've gone to once a month. So if it's an hour a month, I don't think it hurts to at least answer the question some point of, well, what would it cost to go to town water? At least we'd have some type of answer, uh, we're talking ten, fifteen years down the road, but we could say you know, as more and more PFAS, as the regulations change with PFAS Excuse me. As the EPA changes the threshold and we have to start paying for more poet systems, at some point, maybe cost benefit is, it's better to excuse me, look for alternatives.
Yeah, since we do have some hotspots here, does make sense, I think.
Yeah, so if it was gonna be more than once a month, then I would question it, but if it's hour, it's like a Thursday morning, so. And right now they're on Zoom, so it's easy enough to just jump on.
You mentioned the, uh, Lower Village Water Study, what is the timeframe of that? Do you know when to get an update or?
Uh, so they haven't even drilled the test wells yet, so we're looking at like next August or September before the data is in from that. Um, they went to conservation last week, last week, two weeks ago, I don't know, the last two weeks, um.
Two weeks.
For approval on putting test wells in at the Lower Village site and at the Canellis property, we're waiting on Stowe Conservation Trust to, to sign off. Um, so we're looking at probably mid-January for test wells to be installed and then they'll start the collection of data.
Thank you.
Um, I reminder that the annual wreath laying ceremony is Sunday, December eighteenth at noon at Brookside Cemetery. Donations of plain wreaths can be dropped off on the bench at four fifty-three Great Road and residents are encouraged to join in the ceremony to help place the wreaths. Um, I'd like to thank and recognize the Stowe Police Department for putting on an opioid panel last week. Uh, we have received money from the National Opioid Settlement, uh, that the Attorney General was involved in. And part of receiving those funds is now to invest in prevention and, um, treatment and education, so this was the first of what hopes to be many over the course of the next few years. Um, it was a great panel, we had some, uh, we had physicians, we had some, uh, recovering, uh, folks dealing with recovery, we had some sponsors. And then I'd like to thank the Stowe Fire Department, they, um, gave a lesson in how to use Narcan, all participants who attended received Narcan. Um, so it was just great for community members who had questions or just wanted to be aware, um, so I think it was a really good event. Um, we also are planning to install Narcan in all of the town buildings, um, similar to where we have a defibrillator, we're looking to install another little alarmed box that would have Narcan in it, if for some reason it's ever needed, we would have it accessible in all of the buildings. Again, as part of this national opioid settlement, so.
Right.
Um, but look for more programs coming down the line on that, um, and I think that is it for me tonight.
Great. Uh, alright, we are gonna move on to, we have to vote to open a gift account for the Stowe Acres Project. Um, Denise, do you wanna, are you able to talk?
Yes, um, thank you, um. So as Attorney Hewig mentioned tonight, uh, we are on target to close with Stowe Acres on January thirteenth. Uh, right now, we're going through sort of the final phases of what we need, making sure our money is secured, um, and available. If you recall from town meeting in the article, um, Stowe Conservation Trust was, um, partnering with us, so sorry. Um, so this would allow us to take in the funds from SCT and then pay it out as part of the closing. So.
Okay, um, alright, does anybody have any questions?
No.
Nope? Alright, I'm gonna take a motion.
I move to open a gift account for the Stowe Acres Project and accept up to one hundred thousand dollars in donations from the Stowe Conservation Trust to be deposited in said account.
Okay, alright, uh, any further discussion? No, all in favor?
I'm.
Alright, that's unanimous, alright, moving on, we have about a bazillion liquor license renewals.
Let me step up for one second.
Yep, absolutely, um, and so it looks like we have everything in order. Did anyone have any questions about any of the renewals for the liquor licenses? Mister Jess.
Um, just a general thing and I had asked Denise about this, we had discussed, um, asking all of the license holders to have at least one person who was tip certified.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's gonna be, that's been requested, it cer- wasn't in the original paperwork, but they will be asking them to get it, um, by the end of the month.
Okay. Okay.
Um, and then my other, uh, question to Denise, which, uh, was just about, um, there's a box on the form that says if you're not in current business, you're supposed to explain, and we know Stowe Way has been closed for a while. I hope they're coming back, but I just wanted to highlight that.
Got it.
They have, they have been repeating, they're keeping it, their license, even though they've been closed for several years, but
Okay.
So, we can ask at some point.
Yeah, I would.
If they have a plan, cuz we hope they come back.
Right, right, right. I would say, um, do you wanna try and have them, like, approve it and then try and have them in at some point, or?
I think even a correspondence with them, if the, the office just asks them, you know, if they have a plan, I haven't, I've talked to them a couple of years ago, I haven't talked to them recently, so I don't know.
Okay. Okay, um, is that something we could request, Denise, as, uh, just
Stowe Way.
Stowe Way, just what their plans are?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Alright, anybody have any other questions about liquor licenses?
Yeah.
Oh, and Denise, the tip, Ellen brought the tip certify for everybody, okay.
Actually, I do have one, I, I saw, I don't remember seeing this before, but I saw that we actually have laws governing when
Yes.
Oh. Yeah.
The, um, businesses selling liquor can be open, are those based on state law?
So it follows state law, but then the local licensing authority can set your own, um, those were set, I forget the date, um, they have been set with every liquor.
Something like twenty fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen, yeah.
Yes, so they've gone with every license, um, since that time, so the businesses are aware of that and the board can.
Kind of, lot of exceptions and like.
Right, but have we ever seen anything open at two, in the morning in Stowe?
There's no need.
Or maybe the weddings, I guess, I mean, maybe the golf courses for weddings or something.
There's no lights, so.
Right.
It's so late at two o'clock in the morning.
That's right.
You gotta turn off the lights while you're in Stowe, so. Sorry.
Um, and if I, I do wanna just touch base on the tip certification.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, so yeah, so it was, um, included, the the verse that we put together last year was included in the packet, um, it was not included in the checklist, so some of them did not include it, but what we've discovered, which you are all aware, is many of our businesses are seasonal, um, so right now they have no staff, so we have the managers submitted the tip certification for those who work year-round, and then when the staff comes back in the spring, they will get them to us. So last year, part of the issue, and we've been talking about this in the office, is um, I, I, I think we're gonna put together an affidavit because what we approved last year was that the managers and then all servers, sellers, anyone who's handling alcohol should be tip certified. But quite frankly, we don't have a list of those employees, so we'd have to, sort of the honor system.
Right.
So I think we'll put together some type of affidavit that just says, you know, all information has been provided that the board's requested, because otherwise you know, we could look at their insurance.
You wouldn't know.
But if they have fifty employees, forty of them may never touch alcohol, so
Right.
we still, we're still working through that and how to figure out, you know, when staff's coming in, the tip certification lasts for three years, so keeping an eye on when they expire.
Okay.
So we are working on that, but the businesses have been sending it to us, um, I think we're waiting on one of the golf courses because they're not currently open, but.
Great, I'd forgotten we'd done, I thought we were just focusing on managers.
No, we extended it to managers, cuz we even extended it to like package stores and and clerks that were selling it.
Yeah. Right, well, maybe that's where it was, oh, even the clerks.
Yeah, so we can certainly look at that, um, but we made it very broad of who you want a tip certification from.
That's a good idea.
I mean, the better, the more the better, but I, but with that caveat that it's hard to track.
I'm surprised they don't have that as, as a, I mean, it's.
They probably have it as like their own insurance, like, they may have to do that as part of it, but it's, I guess it just doesn't tie to our licensing them for the license.
They would be a best practice.
Yeah.
Yes.
We, I mean, when I ran a, a volun- you know, the entertainment venue and we had volunteers serving beer, every one of them had to be tip certified,
Right, right.
Yeah.
even if they only worked once every six months, so. So I guess, I mean, but, and that was required, not by the town, I mean, it was by the town, but it was more by our insurance and by, um, EDCC license.
Yeah. Alrighty, I will take this long, long motion.
Everybody grab a drink. I move to renew the town's twenty twenty-three liquor licenses for the following businesses, provided all taxes have been paid and all necessary documents have been received and for all on-premise premises licenses and inspection by the Fire Department Building Commissioner has been completed and signed. One, Twenty-Nine Culinary LLC doing business as Nan's Market, two seventy-one Great Road Package Store Wine and Malt. Two, AL, AL and BC Incorporated, eight Hudson Street Package Store, all alcohol. Three, Honey Pot Hill Orchard LLC, one thirty-eight Sudbury Road Farmer Winery Pouring Permit and Common Victroler License. Four, Jay Malone and Sons doing business as Stowe Way Golf, one twenty-one White Pond Road On Premises Wine and Malt. Five, Jay Salmon, Salmon Enterprises Incorporated doing business as Russell's Convenience Store of Stowe. Three ninety Great Road Package Store Wine and Malt. Six, Nikros Spirits Incorporated doing business as Colonial Spirits of Stowe. One seventeen Great Road Package Store, all alcohol. Seven, Red River Rock Incorporated doing business at Red Ginger Restaurant, one seventeen Great Road On Premises, all alcohol. Eight, Robert Page Third LLC doing business as Butternut Farm Golf Club, one fifteen Wheeler Road On Premises, all alcohol. Nine, Stowe Food and Beverage LLC doing business as Stowe Acres Country Club, fifty-eight Randall Road On Premises, all alcohol. Ten, The Airfield Cafe Incorporated doing business as Nancy's Airfield Cafe, three oh two Boxborough Road On Premises, all alcohol. Eleven, Wedgewood Country Club of Stowe Incorporated doing business as Wedgewood Mines Country Club, two fifteen Harvard Road On Premises, all alcohol.
Second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Um, any further discussion? No, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, alright, we are. All right, we are moving on to, we have a class two used car license renewal. Looks like everything's in place for that as well. And then we'll take a movement, a movement? I'll take a motion.
Don't make her laugh.
I know.
I'm sorry.
I move to renew the town's class two licenses for the following businesses for twenty twenty-three, provided all taxes have been paid and all necessary documents received. Great Roads, Great Road Fuels, three sixty-eight Great Road.
Second. Uh, all in favor? Aye. All right, and our last common vic for this year. Thank God.
So why are, was these out of sequence from the ones we did last?
They didn't have all their people working.
Ah, okay.
It's tradition.
Oh, is it? Last met a people, huh? My kind of people.
All right.
Movement?
I'll take a mo- I'll take a motion.
I move to renew the town's common victualler licenses for the following businesses for twenty twenty-three, provided all taxes have been paid and all necessary documents received. Stowe Cafe, one eighteen Great Road.
Second. Any further discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous. Okay, we
I'm sorry, I just realized, I, I ignored my note, cause we were whipping through the, the used car license for Great Fuel, so that's the gas station, right?
Right next door.
We don't have a limit on how many cars he can have. And I know this has been sort of one of those issues, we never used to put limits on cars and then we decided we did for
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm thinking, that's a really small lot and as, I, I think, I mean, I'm fine, given that it's, we've done it, but I think maybe we have a conversation with them before next year about like, so how many cars do you think you can squeeze on that lot?
And I think part of his thing is too, that he's got cars parking there. Like it's not necessar- you're right, it's a small space, but he also has like people, like if I drop my car off.
Right.
It needs a space to be in, and so that's not necessar- I think.
It's pretty self-limiting.
It is, that's what I was gonna say, it is pretty self-limiting.
So if you'd like, we couldn't do a follow-up with them and just ask how many cars at one time they have for sale and at least have that information to
That would be, I think, that'd be good.
And, and go from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I think it's, it wasn't a bad direction to go in general with the, and not that we have that many used car lots, but we did start having that and I sort of feel like we should be at least consistent.
Yeah, that makes sense, absolutely. I love consistency. Um, all right, we've got two sets of minutes. Anyone have any questions?
No, same as always.
No, it's like I feel like I go back in time and I relive.
You remember that?
Last moment.
Remember the one that was less than an hour?
I do.
That was such a sweet meeting.
Now we're heading into nine o'clock.
Not bad.
It's actually not bad considering, let's make it. Um, all right, any questions about the, or comments or changes for the November fifteenth minutes?
Thank you, Joyce, you do a great job.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Joyce. All right, I'll take a motion.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, and November twenty-second, the one-hour meeting. Any notes, any comments? I'll take a motion.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two meeting as drafted.
Uh, second.
I didn't know of other discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, fantastic.
Yeah, I forgot to say as drafted.
Okay, we had a lot of correspondence, does anyone have any comments, questions?
I do.
Yes, we'll start with Inco Word this time.
Yeah. I really enjoyed that we received an email about textile.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask about that too.
So what has to happen to get us going on that?
So I'd say that falls under the Board of Health. Um, and I can tell you, we've had bins in town removed because they've become dumping grounds.
Got it.
Um, so some of the textile companies that will put a bin require it to be in a municipal parking lot, uh, which for us would limit us really to pompo, um, because we don't have space in any of our other municipal parking lots. Um, and so we, the, I don't think the Board of Health is in favor of it at this point of bringing a bin back to town. The one that was at the former fire station was removed about two or three months ago.
I was gonna say, how about that?
Yes, um, unfortunately with, with bins like that, it's usually the town's responsibility to pay for the cleanup of the non-materials that are dumped and left around there, bikes and trash and
Yeah.
Um, so it's still something that's new and coming out, um, there are some companies that are now forming um, that some other towns have brought in. Um, I know they touched upon it at their meeting, I think last week or the week before. Um, and will continue to look at it, but at this point, um, they've been problematic for us, those bins.
We did well with the recycling ones when they be, this was a lo- it feels like a long time ago, when we had the one here in this parking lot and then there was one at the school before the construction, so it was probably, that's when they went away, but it seemed like it was that we were making, we actually were making money off of it and, I mean, money, yeah, a little bit of money, but just because we don't have townwide pickup, it seemed, it would be nice to be able to offer, especially with the new laws around fabric. Just, um, discarded.
I thought they said that they were gonna pick, pick up once a week from it, which sounds pretty organized.
Yeah.
Yes. That's what this one was saying.
Yeah.
So there are, so we talked about, I've talked to Cindy about um having um, an, uh, designated day, um, you know, maybe once a quarter or something to, you know, if we could facilitate something like that, that someone's coming out here and actually spending a few hours collecting stuff, um, it would be more beneficial than just having a dumping spot. Um, so those are the things we are still looking at. Um, but there have been, there are a few um bins around us in neighboring towns for folks to dispose of. Um, but even then, I think they're still fine tuning some of the regulations.
Yeah.
Like if you use a cloth and clean up some grease, that goes in the trash, that doesn't go in a recycling bin, that doesn't
Right.
So it's still trying to figure out what can be thrown out. Um, savers will take even torn clothing, cause then they could, but not soiled and damaged. So I think we're still trying to figure out what would go where and who would collect it.
Mm-hmm.
But we are having ongoing conversations about it. Um, and it has come up from a number of different people have reached out to me and the Board of Health, so we'll continue to look and see what we can do. We're also waiting to see if Devon's plans to offer it as part of their regular collection as well. Um, cause then at least that would be a short-term solution.
What was the bin you mentioned at the old fire station?
There was a, one of those clothing bins.
It's still there, right?
No.
That's what I didn't notice it was gone.
Cause it went around the other side of the building and then it came back to the front of the building about three months ago.
Yeah, and then it was removed.
And then, oh.
Yes.
Just when I thought it was back.
No.
There's the doors, they have a, same.
Um.
Yeah, they also have something at the gym, what was the gymnasium behind the post office.
Yes.
Let us just seem more familiar, okay.
Um, I can go to the Eagle Court of Honor, I will do that.
Well, good.
Um, I will drag my scout with me to be the, to, to, to carry the flags. Um.
Yeah, we're, um, Phoebe will work on the commendation for you for that, so.
That would be great.
And we have it on the calendar for right after Christmas to reach out and
Perfect, perfect, perfect.
Can I circle back to the uh Gleesendale, to the letter from the um committee?
Yeah.
Um, it sounds like um some of their concerns are being addressed and I understand that they've got a list and you know, it's a process, um, are we aware of, I mean, I think they addressed that to the Traffic Advisory Committee, right? Their, their letter of concern.
So they did not, they addressed it, I think they sent it in to us. Uh, we in turn responded that it would fall under the Traffic Safety Advisory. Um, and I think, I think all of the Gleesendale Steering Committee members were at the Traffic Safety Committee meeting last week. So I think, and they actually talked about the fact that they received the letter and are working through it. So whatever was not part of the, this pilot program, um, Chief Solisi plans to put on an agenda for an upcoming traffic safety meeting to continue having those discussions.
Right, cause I think they're all really good suggestions, crosswalks and
Yeah.
speed signs, great. And here sometimes that they feel neglected down there.
Yeah.
Near the border.
It's exciting that the, the lane changed on the bridge.
Oh, I know, I was just gonna say that, I didn't realize, I didn't realize it until I was like on the bridge and then I was like, oh wait.
I'm on the wrong side of it now.
And it was like last Tuesday, it wasn't, it was like Tuesday, all of a sudden they're changing it.
Yeah, all of a sudden, right.
That's great, yeah. On any other?
Are we gonna put that, the anti hate, uh, thank you for whoever
Yes, yes, oh, we should put that on a future agenda for sure to discuss.
Those were the only ones that I could get that were, and I don't wanna say generic, but generic enough to cover sort of all sort of anti hate.
No, and I do, I do like them, um, I like them all, actually.
Yeah, you like them all. Really different.
Yeah, they really were different in tone too, like which I appreciated, right? Like some of them were a little, not casual, but like they, you know, they just were all different, so.
And I did follow up with um the gentleman who sent in the antisemitic um, comments last time, he would love to come before the board. He was traveling at the time
Right.
Um, and told me that when he got back, he would forward um what he worked with Sudbury on, I did go to their website, but um, I have not heard back from him, so I can certainly follow up if the board wants to invite him in.
Okay.
Um, as well.
That's great.
Um, and if I can comment on a correspondence?
Absolutely.
Um, so the Green Advisory Committee information, there is a lot in your packet.
Right.
Um, that was in anticipation of, so the January tenth meeting is very full already. Um, Green Advisory has had this scheduled for quite some time to come before you and then the Planning Board with the Hudson Road and Great Road intersection, that was the only night their engineer could make it. Um, and then we have a couple of other items, we're picking town meeting date and the town election date and we have to finalize the Stowe Acres business, so there's a bunch. Uh, so I had asked Green Advisory to give you as much information as possible, so you could review it ahead of time.
Okay.
So that they, they did not need to go through everything that night.
Okay.
Sort of highlight, they're gonna go over their annual report and then highlight some of their asks for you.
Okay.
Um, they have been told they have forty-five minutes to do their thing, so please um find some time to at least review it um and be ready with any questions or um be prepared that night because they do have a lot of stuff they plan to cover.
Any other comments on correspondence? All right, then I will take a motion.
I move the adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good evening.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Since it's just us and Jonathan left.
Happy holidays, Jonathan.